Will the special meeting of the African Mail Committee? Please come over.
Welcome, Doug Dethley. Jack Brigham. Greg Conlon here. Paul Jones, sir. Scott Lane. Nerissa Dexter. Jim Jens.
Here.
Alan Scape.
Here.
Anthony Nguyen.
Here.
John Holden. Are there microphones here or is it just over there? So we're going to speak loud?
You have no problem.
Just speak loud, just speak loud.
All right, next item is, uh... The, uh...
Here comes Jack.
How many public comments?
We needed you for a forum, Jack, so...
Well, I'm... I made a forum.
Yeah, very important to us. So, the public.
Public comments. On the, uh... Two minutes, we have two more. We have two day, four minutes?
Uh, we did inadvertently have the wrong list in the agenda, so this is just correcting that.
Oh, okay. So we have the, uh, two minutes to approve.
Yeah, well...
So, all right, for the eight minutes, are there any, uh...
Mr. General.
Corrections, additions? We have a motion to approve the eight minutes. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And move on to the, uh...
Did you have a vote outside? Did you vote?
Yeah, I voted.
I didn't hear it. You gotta speak up.
Very low voice.
Aye, aye, please.
The, uh, June minutes, there are additions or corrections. Brigham, do we have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay, now... Okay, now we move to the, uh... So we'll run through the time, Robert, you want to start off?
Sure, so first item is the election of the chair.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I'll start with the election.
Oh, I'd like to make a comment first. The city council, and correctly pronounced, by imposing term limits, they're interested in stirring rail committee up a little bit. And I think that's probably a good idea.
Us particularly or all of them?
Well, we were the only one that had no term limits.
So they did not help?
Yeah, we do now.
Yeah, I think that all the committees, uh, shuffled a little bit in terms of, uh, adjusting the ends of terms because a lot of them were... A lot of the committees had all the members ending on the same date. And so there was a reassignment of, uh, terms so that the... That they would be staggered. And so as part of that was the same thing with this committee. So everybody should've gotten a notice as to when their terms expire. Everybody's terms are on the website, uh, and as they come up, basically every year, there'll be a call for applications. Everybody's wanting to reapply.
Is there a limit on reapplying?
No.
Because on the FIDAS committee, you have to be off so many years.
Right.
There's no restriction on that.
Okay. The goal was to try to, what Robert says, it was to stagger the timeframe as we were ending up. When Teresa was... She'd have to recruit for all these positions and, you know, ultimately it became very difficult. But, you know, if rail was available, there we go. But all this is available, it's been a staggered... One person would basically apply for everything. Uh, and so this is kind of the stationary off-season, I might say, recruiting.
Sounds like it.
Is there restrictions on the term of the chair or the vice chair?
No. No.
Can you give us the terms of each person?
It's in your diet, it's in your...
So it's about halfway, three items, and a five A.
Right. Yeah, so you have that information to help you, uh, make some nominations when folks, uh... When folks' current terms expire.
Okay, so having said all that, we're open for the next chair.
What is the... Should there be consideration of the term of the chair?
No, the term is one year.
It is one year?
The chair term is one year.
Yeah. Every other chair is a year. Chair, that's right.
So then there's no... Everybody on the committee will be here at least one year according to those?
Yeah, yeah, so we can elect anyone on the committee chair. They may turn out, and here, Jack, who wanted to...
Nerissa Dexter. Unfortunately, she's not here. And I'm not sure she's... Who's that? Nerissa Dexter.
Well, because of the short term of Scott and Jack, or Jim, I think they should be given the opportunity if they want it, to be chair. Jim, you had an desire to be chair?
No. I initiated the creation of this committee in 2003. I chaired it several years. Quite a few years.
What about you, Jack? You've got one year left on your term.
Right.
I'll volunteer. So I'm happy to volunteer for the chair. All right.
I'll second Alex.
All right. All in favor?
No.
Does anyone else? Is there anybody else?
We only have one chair, we now have two candidates.
Oh, you do have two?
Yeah, Nerissa Dexter.
Oh, you put Nerissa.
Yeah.
We need a second.
Should we call her?
We're voting on this, we're not...
Well, can't we call and ask her?
We're voting between two candidates. The one who receives the larger number of votes is in.
That person may not want it.
We've got one that says he'll accept it.
So are you really interested?
All right, how many people vote for Nerissa Dexter? How many people vote for Alex? Alex? Don't wake me up.
So, uh, hopefully I will be able to do as good of a job as Paul has done. He's passed many years, I've, as long as I've been, I've been the chairman of the chair.
What should Nerissa be?
What?
Oh, we can...
I can add the vice chair, huh? Yeah, 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 I just wanted to say a few words just there. Paul, for his services, chair. Yeah, uh, let's open up nominations for, uh, vice chair.
Jack, you want to recommend her again?
I'll second.
I'm gonna make it to Jim. Such a sterling vice chair.
You want it, Jim?
Can we, uh... I, I, I wouldn't do it. You know?
Not secretly?
I wouldn't nominate, I would not say you'd ever, I wouldn't do it. Can we nominate, or can we approve Nerissa? Can we prove someone's not here?
No, we...
I'm getting, I'm getting shaking heads no from the staff.
Well... We should have declined at the next meeting, we can...
Then we can put somebody else. Couldn't we back out if I have... You know, these... Well, I would imagine we could back out of it if she declined and she resigned as vice chair and then we could have a new nomination for that vice chair at the next meeting. We'll have a full complement, hopefully we'll have a full complement of folks.
Oh, the other alternative would be to defer to the next meeting, wherein we may have more...
More people.
More people.
I think that there's too much going on to have too much with our vice chair.
Well, we do have a nomination for vice chair. I think we have to, we can also vote on leaving the position empty. Is there, is that a possibility?
Having held the position for a number of years as vice chair, I can tell you, you can do it, you can go for a couple of months without the position being filled. Don't worry about it.
It does mean the chair becomes old.
Yes. For the next...
For the next couple of months.
Oh. Well, okay, I think I can, I can hold it. So where are...
No, we are, we continue until we go to the election.
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, okay, so we have, we do have a nomination in the second for vice chair. But there's also been a motion to table it, so I'm a little unclear about the protocol here.
I might suggest that you table it in that meeting.
Okay. Okay, under our license counsel, I will, I will table it. I think we should table that unless there's strong objections. We should ask Nerissa if she wants the vice chair nominated.
Can we just call her?
No.
No. You cannot.
She's in a very bad state.
No, but she's not at the meeting, she's not been agendaized elsewhere. The meeting is here, so either she's here or she's not.
So you prefer to defer? Yeah, because we don't know if she wants to accept and...
I think it's in the best interest of the committee.
Say again?
I think it's in the best interest of the committee to defer, so I say...
If you're okay with that, Jim, I don't know if you...
Sure.
Okay, so, um, we'll have that for the next meeting. And then, uh, five C.
Five C, let's see, update on the, uh, this report on electrification project. Uh, there's not really been too much going on in town. I do have a little bit of clarity on an item that I brought up last meeting in terms of the, uh, control structure that it was planned at the Watkins Crossing. It was a question as to whether or not it would be something that's upgradable to a clock gate, to manage clock gates. The answer I got from Caltrain was yes.
Was yes?
Was yes, is upgradable to a clock gate.
And it won't be in the layup of a clock?
No, it'll be on the, in the track area outside of the reception. Just, I believe just past the distance threshold.
Well, you know, I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss it at this point, but because you're talking about clock gates. And if I can...
We're not talking about clock gates, what you just mentioned. I just answered the question that was raised about the structure that is going on in the train station.
Let me ask you this, I want to discuss the point that was raised a meeting ago or a couple meetings ago about possibly switching Watkins to one-way traffic.
That's not an item for this meeting.
We can, we can include that in a meeting.
No, that's what I wanted to get at. It's not in the purview at this point. Transportation items are within transportation.
Well, yeah, but if it has to do with being able to extend the gates for the track, for the crossings, then it isn't.
If you want to talk about the crossings in a future meeting, we can put it on the agenda, we can talk about that in a certain section. But, per the ground act and the information that we got from last meeting, we can't, can't change course, it's not under the...
Well, I would suggest we put it on the next agenda, and I will go with the transportation issue.
Under item P?
Yeah.
We can talk about items for future agenda.
So we'll, we'll, I'll make sure to get that on the agenda for next, next, after that. Okay. Uh, just one observation I made, just looking down the tracks as I pass by that going to the five. I noticed they put in a hole, I don't know if it's in Atherton's territory, but, um, it's kind of Atherton and then the park border on the south side and also on the north side, they also put in, uh, just along the right of it. So it looks like maybe they're starting the, the...
Where is it related?
Barrows. Barrows, I can't tell because I look at it from Watkins and going to the five. But, uh, you, it looks like it might be a little bit past the barrows.
Past the north?
Yeah, yeah, just a little bit past. So if you, you just look down the right of way, you can, you can just look north and then you'll see the whole thing there.
Or is it...
It's related to electrification.
It's, it looks like electrification, because it's right in the middle of the... So I, just my observation, I don't know anything else about it, just if you guys want to take a look on the way back. Go on the way back, I just look down, you see one, we remember park border over here, and one also in the north at Atherton, so... Any other comments? Okay, five C.
Five C, Caltrain business plan. This is a media topic. Um, so we passed along a variety of items, uh, attached to the agenda, including the long-range vision summary memo, uh, presentation that Caltrain prepared regarding their, uh, their service vision as well as, uh, the organizational assessment report that they prepared. Um, in your abbreviated packet, we have, uh, a copy of that, uh, summary, uh, memo which highlights the recommendations for the long-range vision. Uh, and so if you recall, Caltrain was looking at basically three service scenarios. One is what they call the baseline growth, uh, which is what they had planned with the initiation, the growth rate that they planned with electrification. They have what they, uh, termed moderate growth scenario and a hybrid scenario. And, uh, through the business plan, they did a variety of analyses, uh, ranging from service benefits, costs, uh, et cetera. So for the baseline growth scenario, the cost, uh, shown on page seven is about $22.4 billion. For the moderate growth scenario, it's $25.3 billion. And for the hybrid scenario, $30 million.
What is the general?
The general differences relate to how many passengers they anticipate serving in the most scenarios, the number of trains. So the baseline growth scenario, or the comparison of growth scenarios in terms of, uh, number of trains and stops and stuff are shown on figure three on page four. Um, so the baseline growth is six trains per hour.
Wait, 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 page four, we're at page four.
So on the left is baseline growth. Uh, call them the beige lines or Caltrain. So six trains per hour, uh, per direction for peak, uh, period. For the moderate growth, it goes up to eight trains per hour for that peak service.
I wonder if you see that, the number of dots?
No, that's, it's listed right here. So these three lines are two trains each. And the second one, the red and the gray lines, are four trains each. And then for the high growth, it's 12 trains per hour in directions. And so that is the, uh, two red and one gray of the Caltrain lines at 12 trains per hour. So to serve those growth rates, what you have is going from six trains an hour to either eight trains an hour or 12 trains an hour.
Is that the farm, the three trains on the farm, right?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead, Paul.
If they get, uh, eight trains an hour plus four high-speed red an hour, there's no way they can do that on two tracks. So in, in looking at this growth scenario, they're very, uh, bandied around all these numbers that are reasonably consistent with their, uh, patterns. But they have made no mention of how they're going to physically accomplish these things because, uh, as, as the system now stands, they can't. They'd have to have a four-track system down the line in order to do those high-growth numbers.
Yeah, in the, in the graph, in the blue, you'll see the places where they'd want to put, uh, four tracks.
Yeah.
Where they...
It's blue, I have to see.
See the blue bands along the...
Right, sorry.
On the left. Have seen, it's here, all these blue, that means that's a lot track, lot track. So here, I'm popping that plot track between South San Francisco and Millbrae, plot track between Hayward Park to...
When you say quadrants, you mean four tracks?
Four tracks, correct.
I think the extra tracks are meant to be passing tracks.
Correct, yes.
Well, they're passing tracks, because they're tracks. I don't think it counts, four tracks. And they need them to go to train them.
Yeah, so for each of the scenarios, they forecasted where and approximately how long those passing tracks would need to be. So in all scenarios, not in Atherton.
Not in what?
Not Atherton. Not in Atherton.
Is Atherton or Millbrae?
So...
Yeah, correct, not, not there, uh, our town on Millbrae, even in the hybrid scenario.
I think what Paul was saying is, correct me if I'm wrong, in order to achieve the volume at full peak on, with all the trains or tracks, it's the only way to go throughout the board. Uh, that's reasonable. The two-track component that Jack mentioned, those are solely passing tracks and they're not considered tracks.
Well, and, and they, they involve a scheduling issue around entering and leaving those tracks.
Correct.
And when they start loading that system of trains, they're not going to have much flexibility. They're going to have to move essentially log step down, down that line to get the trains there.
Which means coordination between features.
Like a comparison.
On their new train parallel, how much do they have in terms of...
They're talking about their service, so all of those are their service. There is an allotment or an estimate, uh, an allotment of four trains per hour for high-speed rail, but that's operated separately.
And it's not in the business.
And it's not there.
Really, what the blue line is?
That just means the places they, they'll have.
Uh, for the hybrid scenario.
No, no, it's a little...
Oh, the blue line is...
The high-speed rail?
Yeah, the blue line is the high-speed rail.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay.
Because, yeah, it's only stopping over a...
So what is the one that starts at Zinn, Zinn, Yurda, and goes to Gilbert? Is that non-electrified Caltrain, is that what that's supposed to represent?
Uh, I believe that that's, the blue lines are the high-speed.
In the business plan, they're anticipating electrifying down to Gilbert.
I see.
So that would call it, now it would look a little odd. Meaning the second item, they're sent, that's not mentioned.
Is there a stop at all at Millbrae? I don't see any stops.
Yeah.
Yes.
There is one at Millbrae?
Yes.
Looks like a half a moon there.
Yes. So, you're, uh, Millbrae is right here. And so that just does use the frequency, the half a moon is related with the frequency. And so that is every half hour.
Two times a mile.
In Billwood, correct.
That's, but that's baseline, they're expecting the, uh, second scenario, I think they call medium, and then possibly treating them for the high scenario, which is the right one. And one of the interesting things we'll see when we get to the, uh, high-speed rail plan is that, uh, high-speed rail is other than that.
They what?
Uh, high-speed rail is not anticipating in clock tracks.
Well, we'll, we'll get to that.
We'll get to that, but I just want to point that out because is, that's a big difference between this plan and the plan for this.
One of the variable factors for those three scenarios is money?
Well, there's a whole bunch of variables. It's ridership, it's money, it's how many trains, it's how much, uh, clock, how many air spaces will need four tracks for passing. Uh, so there's a whole host of differential impacts for each of those scenarios.
But it is money, that's why, you gotta have money to do the, the more, the number of trains. That's the barrier, the main barrier.
They need $22 billion.
Well, that's just for the baseline.
For the baseline.
Yeah. So the cost goes from 22 to 30.
So... From this point on or from beginning?
No, from this point forward.
Estimated today.
That does not include, uh, electrification money.
This is after electrification.
After, after.
Does the plan have any, uh, sources of funds?
Not yet.
Little detail.
So, what they were trying to do first is outline what they would like the, the service to look like in the future. And the next steps go into, um, how they, their future things are going down into more into the capital expenditures out there and what those funding sources might be. But that's in the next stages of the development of the business plan.
What about the dumb, dumb arc connection, is that in there or anything?
No.
Well, I have a question. On, on page five, it makes reference to the project team having developed customized booklets for each city, showing the impacts and benefits of different growth scenarios in their jurisdiction. Has Atherton seen its booklet?
Yes, it's available online, I can forward that.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
I was wondering about the, the statement here that the project team had prepared customized booklets for each city and I was wondering describing the impacts and benefits of the different growth scenarios. And I was wondering, Atherton, that is, receives that booklet.
And who prepared it?
They did or?
They did.
And gave it to us?
It's online.
Yeah.
Yes. And what does it say generally?
Generally, it shows the, um, frequency that's proposed for our service in Atherton. There's only one train per hour.
But not through train service?
No. Just a stop.
Just a stop.
I'm sorry, stop, sir?
Number of stops. Number of stops. Every time it's a train stop.
Once an hour?
Once a day.
And also every...
That's called the benefit.
Do we comment on it?
Yeah, coast station is happening.
Where?
There's a council, there's a council subcommittee that's been tasked with discussing service levels with Caltrain. The committee has already voted on what type of service was desired, that information went to the council. The council created a subcommittee to talk about that with Caltrain.
Do we have any role here?
No. You already did.
Should we just ban?
Oh, we made our recommendation.
You made your recommendation.
Of course.
Which was to provide full, and were we hashing actions from... This is outside of the realm of...
We can...
There we are.
I, I can talk to you about the ones you can, you can staff with.
Yeah, okay.
Well, what is the committee recommending?
Uh, we already recommended to...
No, the committee from the council.
They are in discussions with Caltrain.
There's been nothing formalized yet.
No.
Is the town, is the town supposed to or allowed to submit comments?
I want to, I want to save Robert from the...
Thank you, Robert. Okay. This is my...
The ground back.
Okay, so we're not, not many. Yes, I, I need to ring it more often, so we're outside of this, so...
Are there any other comments or questions about the 2040 Caltrain business plan?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jack.
Is the town expected to or allowed to submit comments on this plan?
Yes.
Expected to or allowed to?
Uh, the public is allowed to, and at a future meeting, again, if the cap, if the committee wants to make formal comment, they can recommend formal comments to council.
To the council?
Yes.
We cannot speak directly to Caltrain.
It's not an action item, so we can't recommend that.
But if you want to have that as a future item, you can do that.
Well, October, the...
There's plenty of time.
It's probably impactful. I guess they don't have any of the most... Anyways, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So I do want to just highlight one other item is that this, the recommended long-range service vision is geared towards the moderate growth scenario without including in the future growth to meet the high demand if it materializes later on.
May I?
Oh, go ahead, please.
At the JTV meeting... At the JPB meeting, which, uh, Jack and I both attended, they, they had chillions of wonderful plus of comments from the public about how marvelous the service is going to be in the future. And they just went on and on. We finally left. We're all we can stomach.
In that opinion, which would be all the twenty forty fairy tale? That's, it's completely unrealistic about, uh, on the funding and two, the assumptions of high-speed rail. And there are no line Bs for what if the funding isn't available and what if high-speed rail doesn't materialize?
Was that, was that?
Yeah, is there anything else? Okay, um, now I'm just wondering, do you guys want to, um, go to five D, then come back to five D, or just talk about the high-speed rail, it's kind of related to what Caltrain is doing, or do you just take it for a break and make a preference or? If not, I'll, just because it's related, uh, to Caltrain, I'm going to move us to five D and come back to five D.
Okay.
If, if that's okay.
That's, I'll be prepared for that. Okay, so, um, in your package, there's an abbreviated presentation that was, uh, abbreviated, abbreviated excerpt of the presentation that High-Speed Rail gave to the local policymakers working group. Um, where is that? It's in your package, it's the last item of the week. And so, um, what this is, is basically how, um, High-Speed Rail staff has, uh, made a recommendation of what they're termed the preferred alternative, which will be presented to the High-Speed Rail Board on September seventeenth of this year. Uh, and so in essence, for the segment between Gilroy and, um, San Francisco, there are only two differences between alternative A and alternative B. Uh.
And those are the three that were presented?
No. Well, you were presented, well, we're talking about this, Caltrain service. This is High-Speed Rail.
Two different organizations, and you'll see that their plans don't necessarily mesh together.
Yeah. So for High-Speed Rail, they've been basing their, our, they've been basing their analyses on what is Caltrain's baseline growth, because that's the only thing that has been formally adopted by Caltrain. Uh, so the two differences are, in essence, uh, location of rail yard up in Brisbane, um, whether it should be located on the east side or the west side of the tracks. Um, and whether or not there should be a passing track segment, uh, from San Mateo to Redwood City. So those are basically the differences between alternative A and alternative B. So alternative A has the pa, has the, uh, uh, rail yard on the east side of Brisbane. And alternative B has the rail yard on the west side of Brisbane and that passing track segment. The recommendation after they went through all of their analyses and the preferred alternative is to go with alternative A. Um, in essence, everything up along the corridor, straight line shot. Uh, the passing tracks only is identified in the Caltrain baseline scenario, which is up near Millbrae, and the rail yard on the east side of the traffic. Brisbane is the one that's really going to have the comments on the alternatives.
Has Brisbane had any voice?
They, they will be.
That would make you see.
I, I can say that, uh, Brisbane has had this in front of them, and it was a huge public meeting. Because now that city of Brisbane has a project development identified. So the conflict is the facility, the light maintenance facilities impacts developments that they already have as proposals. Apparently, they're a little faster than HSR, so they have projects identified now in the light maintenance area.
Yeah, for both options.
Yes. They, they have a plan that's gone before the voters, voters and donors.
I'll say. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, I went to the community working group session, which had the same handout. And, uh, I, I'd like to describe a little bit about what happened there. We were given this presentation, which includes a, a very, very high level comparison of alternatives. They, they were, uh, min-school items about endangered species and, and that sort of, there was nothing substantive at all. And they asked the members of the group to vote on which they preferred. And several of the members commented that there was insufficient information given to them to make an intelligent choice. And then we were asked to vote, vote on how we felt and how we thought our constituencies felt. And this whole thing was just a sandbag zone. It, it created a huge adverse reaction in the work.
Well, what about this on page twelve? Remove holdout stations, holdout rule at Broadway and Atherton Caltrain stations.
So in, so both. Yeah, so in both scenarios, they have, uh, some things that are included in, in both. So what I highlighted was the differences. But common to both scenarios are the speeds going up to a hundred ten miles an hour, up to a hundred ten miles an hour along the corridor. So all the track modifications are hard to do that. Uh, peak operations at four trains per hour per direction. Uh, and the six trains per hour per direction for Caltrain, again, consistent with that baseline scenario.
Yeah, if they're running that many trains per hour, they have to fix all holdout stations because they can't make sure there's only one train at a time.
Yeah, so to do that, they have the holdout station modifications both here and in, in Broadway. Uh, they have safety modifications, uh, at Caltrain only stations and at Atherton crossings. What that means is, and I think it's, it's further, is that at the great tracks with, uh, basically, at great tracks will all be upgraded to plot rates.
Right, exactly. Where is that in, for which?
That is on page, on slide thirteen. And so basically, what they're saying is that with all these trains at the speeds of their own.
At a hundred ten miles an hour.
At a hundred ten miles an hour. They would, all the at-grade crossings would be upgraded to plot rates.
And, uh.
Go ahead.
Uh, Robert had a drawing of the, uh, change to the Atherton station for the main holdout that's, what, several months ago. That showed the fence down between the tracks and the, the change in the design of the plot zones. So maybe they have.
Yeah, that, that was shared with the committee.
Yes.
Some time ago.
It was quite a while.
Does, uh, the High-Speed Rail Authority have eminent domain that they could use to get what they want from Brisbane?
From where?
From Brisbane.
Uh, well, they have high, they have eminent domain authority on how they use it in some of their board.
They do have it.
They do have it.
They've used it in central now.
Does Caltrain have?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Caltrain has two sort of passing tracks on which they could take, uh, property out of Atherton.
Okay, so again, that's outside, we're running the topic. If you want to have a side conversation, feel free to come to my office.
You might get more traffic than you want.
Well, that's why I'm here. Um, and so, uh, let's see here, so just highlighting a couple other differences. Obviously, this cost is a big differentiating factor between the two alternatives. Uh, and, uh, you have the summary, uh.
What is, is there a significant?
Uh, the cost differential is from two point six billion to three point five billion. It's the estimated capital cost. And so that differential is.
Do what? Probably the passing track.
That's the passing track and the change.
Which is not that much. Caltrains.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so that, um, and so you have in the abbreviated slide presentation, uh, some of the differentiating, uh, basically, they show alternative A as being a better alternative under most, under the most if not all. Uh, and so there is an open house, that there are several open houses that are scheduled. Uh, one at, uh, one in San Francisco on the twelfth, which was passed. They have one in San Mateo on the nineteenth. The one that's, uh, that was scheduled in Gilroy for the eighth has been rescheduled to the twenty-second. Uh, because of recent events in Gilroy, they changed that. There's a meeting in San Jose on the fifteenth and another one in Los Angeles on the twenty-first, so.
Well, didn't Redwood City have one?
Uh.
Yeah, they had one on the nineteenth.
Oh, they have, they have one on the nineteenth, that's the one.
What's scheduling one?
That's on this page, so it's quite a page. Sixty-two.
What double?
Sixty-two. It's abbreviated, I took, there were like a hundred and something slides, I'm not.
A page out, a page after thirty.
It's all sixty-five.
Or is anybody going to that? I think, what, what day of the week is that?
So it's Monday.
Monday. I still can't believe that none of the high-tech companies are advocating a stop in Palo Alto. None.
Well, it may be, but I guess Millbrae has the airflight.
What?
Uh, Millbrae had the airflight, I think, yeah.
Because of the, they, there's a transfer opportunity in San Francisco.
If you're interested in high-speed rail, it would make no sense to have any other stop.
Makes no sense, so what then? Have any other stop? Well, I think it, I think Palo Alto is the center of the universe in Silicon Valley, and if you're going to go to LA in two hours from Silicon Valley, it should be a Palo Alto.
No, he leaves from Santa Fe.
That's too far.
Yeah, so.
I, I'm anticipating the bell, so let's stay on.
Uh.
Don't worry.
Okay.
Um, so back to, uh, are there any other comments for High-Speed Rail, um, questions, comments?
As I said, you're all welcome to attend any of those public meetings.
So, um, after five D.
Okay. So five D is the, uh, recently released, um, uh, grand jury report on the, uh, uh, joint power on the JPB regarding facilitating and coordination of grade separation projects. So in essence, right now jurisdictions are pretty much better for themselves, and they're advocating for their projects, trying to coordinate and allocate funding, um, which is listed in here as a piecemeal approach as opposed to corridor-wide prioritization plan. And so the grand jury is recommending that the JPB take a, uh, greater role in, uh, overviewing, managing, and prioritizing grade, grade separation projects. Uh, they're recommending that they develop a master plan, um, that they have, uh, greater expertise than the local jurisdictions and can help, um, prioritize so that projects are more successful.
Good for them.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Paul.
J, JPB isn't equipped to do that. They don't have the staff. They, they just run out and hire another consultant and put down another, another path and get something that was, in effect, so inexpensive.
The, the other problem I see with the JPB is that it's a political body.
Yes.
And they are coming from different jurisdictions, three each from each of their counties, and San Mateo County happens to have the most, less, given the most, um, at-grade crossings. And, uh, Santa Clara and Champs is kind of very few, but, um, being a political body equally representative, they might decide, hey, let's give each county equal amounts because we all got input, so, so. San Mateo will need more, uh, money for all the grades that are at-grade, but they may not necessarily get more of the money even though it represents the most. But I, yeah, I applaud the grand jury for trying to find a solution because it is, the card system is pretty, and has a lot to be designed.
Yeah, so the JPB will have to provide a formal response to the grand jury on the report. Um, and so we look forward to seeing how they, how they choose to respond. Uh, but, you know, there are, as, as mentioned, there are challenges in terms of doing that, so it'll be interesting to see how they, how they respond.
Should we comment? What's your deal, Ray?
If you're commenting on this, then sure.
Is it all right?
Yeah, it's okay.
Doesn't matter.
I don't understand. MTC took jurisdiction over Park through sixteen towns and coordinated, designed it, and built. Now, why can't MTC step in and do the same thing here?
Well, um.
This is, this is the grand jury.
This is a grand jury report.
I know, but isn't the, isn't, isn't that depressing, what the MTC did? They stole money. They did everything to make it happen, but they got it done.
Well, the JPB can seek funding for things through a variety of means, but.
No, but the MTC has you, jurisdiction. They, why?
They are reaching for transportation needs.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I just, uh, I don't think that we doesn't want to do it.
I think, Greg, I don't know if the grand jury considered the MTC. I, we don't know the foundation.
Or maybe, I don't know, there's some.
Surely wasn't a subcommittee of the grand jury, and this is what their determination or recommendations were, is solely a recommendation. Uh, if we think things will change, if somebody better higher up than us thinks the MTC is the answer.
Is this on their next meeting?
Um, I think that everybody is required to have a response to the grand jury, and I'm sure that they are required to have a response.
You know what I assume?
Uh.
I think, Greg, uh, sorry, Paul, you said.
So definitely, so likelihood is going to be there sometime.
So next meeting, uh, so definitely, JPB will have to decide.
That the likelihood when they respond, formalize their response.
Uh, Robert, I have a question. Was, was the JPB or Caltrain part, uh, one of the parties or part of the process led to this grand jury report? Were those a willing participant thus far, or just going to be sort of something that they're, they kind of had their hands off? This is lady pointing to say.
They're going to say, um, in the back of the report, it says that, um, as part of this, the grand jury interviewed, uh, some San Mateo County Public Works Directors, uh, representatives from South San Francisco, Brisbane, San Mateo, Redwood City, and Atherton. There were officials with Caltrain, officials with San Mateo County Transportation Authority, official from the PUC, board of supervisors, uh, senior members of San Mateo County Transport Team, and then they also, uh, Dr. Lapco, Kern County, and Riverside County Transportation. So they conducted a variety of interviews to come up with their analysis or information.
Do we know who represented Atherton?
I do.
I can tell you, nobody knows.
I don't.
That's the way the grand jury works.
Oh.
They're private.
Do we know what prompted the grand jury studying? Did they decide to do it on their own or? They decided to do it on their own or was it initiated by some entity?
Grand jury queries typically often are questions that go into a pool and they go, oh, this is an interesting topic. We'll run to that. As you know, there was a grand jury pool related to the fire disaster. So it's just power of suggestion, recommendations from the grand jury, and they break it off into groups. This apparently was a pretty big.
So somebody must have thought, well, it's the grand jury.
That's how the grand.
And the scope of this report, did you catch grade separations?
That's correct.
Correct.
So, good question. So nobody knows in the grand jury who they interviewed for Atherton?
Correct.
So the interviewees told that they are not supposed to.
Correct.
Give her or deny?
Correct. Right there. That's the way the grand jury works.
Why is someone in the grand jury years ago and there was no restriction on telling people?
If I, if I am understanding correctly related to the process, you actually signed now a declaration that basically says you will not talk about this in your process and your input or anything. If I'm understanding the process correctly.
Do we have any idea whether they have somebody that knows what they're talking about for Atherton or does they just?
We have no idea.
We have no idea if anybody does.
Yeah, I wouldn't characterize the Atherton representatives. How I, I would, I personally see grade separation as being necessary. So, yeah, but anyways. Um, are there any other comments or questions about the grand jury?
I think it's a very good idea that they did it. I applaud them for trying to make some sense of it.
You're the one that asked.
I, I, I disagree with the Atherton representatives' characterization of the residents.
Well, how we know what, yeah, representative?
Well, what I want. What was that?
How do we know what their characterization was?
Oh, uh, they say in, in the report, um.
What they said?
Yeah, what Atherton representatives said. Uh, they don't go through every, um, jurisdiction they talk to, but they, they said that, they say that Atherton wants grade separation to happen. Uh, but I would be a little more nuanced in how he said that because it's a certain type of grade separation, not any.
Right.
I think it's two, two separate quotes. One quote is that we don't want any elevated or high that we'll burn. The next sentence was that, uh.
Uh, that, that we want, uh, that we want to grade separate.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we wanted somebody else to pay for it.
Yeah.
But, but didn't, didn't say what the provision had, this is not.
Where are you reading this?
It's in the grand jury.
Do we have a grand jury?
Somebody should.
It's in your hand.
Well, it's in there. Did somebody point to the page where they ordered that?
I read it like a month or so now, so I'm gonna see if I can find it.
What page?
Um, let me see. It's not terribly long, it should be two hundred.
Okay, so. I don't have. Well, there's a reference to an article in the Ominous, Barbara Wood.
So Barbara Wood article.
It says Atherton has little interest in moving tracks. It's right here on our website's source materials. It is page fourteen.
I'm on page seven, it's not clear.
And then, oh, I see, that's the one.
Where's the commentary you were reading about Atherton, what page?
Uh, I'm still looking for it.
Whatever is at the top of page seven.
Yeah. Okay, that's whatever. Page two seven. And, yeah, so the top bullet, Atherton does not currently have plans to undertake grade separations. However, Atherton supports grade separations that is too at-grade crossing and does not have a source of funding to complete. If grade separations at those at-grade crossings were proposed, funded by other agencies, Atherton will support it. Is the quote. Any other, um, comments or questions? Um, let's move on to five F.
So five F, um, I don't have enough to typically start the ten meetings and provide some info. Please, uh, hear if there's some information to share.
I can give them that stuff. Yeah, so, um, so Cross Train Transit Partners, they're the group of fundery and Facebook. I forget, Sam Trans is involved with them or not, but, um, uh, so right now they, they're putting together the plans and they've identified, uh, Redwood City only for, um, uh, for a stop. They're not taking about a stop route at all, just connect toward to Redwood City, uh, way across, or across the Del Barton way. Uh, and then right now the preliminary plans are envisioning stations in Marsh, Willow, and Newark. So that's, that's the current plan, of course, probably subject to major changes since it's still like early.
What are they gonna do with those locations?
They're gonna put a station. A station, yeah. On the Del Barton Spur, Marsh, Willow, and Newark. That's the post. That's what they're gonna work with initially.
On three?
Yes.
What's Newark?
Newark is a.
This is not gonna be a high-speed rail.
Yeah, which is real.
It's just a rail trail.
S- maybe. Well, it may have a location. Well, and, okay, so they're debating, so they have the right of way until Newark. Passport that's owned by, um, I think UP, yeah, Union Pacific owns that.
Oh, Sam Trans.
So Sam Trans, I'm sorry, Sam, Sam Trans owns the right of way up until Newark. And then Passport, if they want to connect to like Bart or Ace, I think goes up there or any of, any other, um, transit system, they have to get rights from UP. And UP will be, uh, not very friendly to overhead lines for rail. So, um, it's gonna get a little complicated in their planning. They, they're thinking like, uh, maybe we'll do battery, we'll do overhead and battery from Newark to the rest of the way. Or maybe we'll do diesel. They're, they're debating a lot of different things. Um, but it does get very complex, complicated because they have two sets of systems. Or we could go battery, you know, the, the basis well enough that they could just go battery all the way through.
Or they can go fuel cell.
Or fuel cell, yeah, that's a possibility as well. Um, the other thing that they pointed out is they'll need another track in Redwood City. So maybe we'll have five tracks in Redwood City. Uh, because obviously they're going to be stopping there and coming out. So they're gonna need some way to not interfere with the regular eight to twelve or how many other trains they're gonna have. Um, and they're gonna have a set of poles that they're gonna be over in the system. Um, now that's also opened up the possibility of, although this is kind of just Redwood City taking in Caltrain and kind of moving the state of Redwood City in order to block, uh, to get more room. Uh, because in order to fit more, uh, more rail lines, there's not enough room. A Safeway, the back of Safeway is in the way, and the streets in the way right now. So if they move it a lot north, there's parking there that they own and they obviously need that parking for rail there. So a lot of, you know, ideas they're throwing around. But if you're interested in when they're gonna finish the EIR and all the state federal formations, it's gonna be Q four of twenty twenty-one, they're, they're planning to start construction. So you don't have to write that down because I don't think that's gonna, that's gonna happen. But, but that's, that's their, uh, that's their plan. But obviously very optimistic. So that's, that's, um, what I have from the Del Barton side.
As I recall, the last, uh, number in that plan included a catch-up to speed track that came down through Atherton. Was it for the additional track? And then rail train is going south to the EIR.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, that's not planned, um, at this point. Uh, I, I, at least that's not in their current interest in it. I mean, maybe at a future point they'll decide to take the Y south, then they'll be going to Del Barton Park or something like that. But right now they're just thinking Redwood City only.
Well, this wasn't to take it south.
Well, just the way.
It's just a waiting point.
Yeah.
To feed in the queue.
Yeah. So the other things that are planned over here, I don't think was it?
Uh, have the.
It's not in the plan.
Eight trains per hour in every direction, Caltrain.
Let me ask you.
Station's not the right path.
At, at the Y currently, is it set up so the train's coming in on that number, the number on Y could, could hook up?
Yes.
It is set up, yeah.
Yeah, you can do that. Or at least if you look at, look at Google Maps.
Yeah.
Which is what I'm thinking of. The, the Y has directions south. Whether the tracks are usable is another question, but, uh, tracks have, are there to hook up. And obviously, um, San Mateo owns that, all that line there, so they can use those tracks.
Do they have a flyover?
And that's your opinion related to it?
Google Maps, yeah. That's my opinion, uh, based on Google Maps. Sorry.
If they, if they ever make decisions like that. Just, yeah, we have to be careful because.
My, my speculation, my speculation just based on what they're doing now.
Do they go south? Do they have a flyover or?
No, 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 it's just a Y that, that goes, that goes south from the, the Del Barton Spur. Comes down instead of up, just comes down south. Okay, okay. Um, so six committee and staff member comments? Does anyone have any, uh, comments they want to share?
I'd like to congratulate Alex for taking on the job and having that in his first meeting. So more dignity than I was able to have for several years.
It's not over yet. We'll see if I can embarrass him some.
And along, along those lines, I think he'll follow.
Oh, yes.
Well, thanks.
How many years has it been?
I, I don't, I don't.
You lost count.
Three years. No, it's not ten, it was when Barry Carlson had to resign. Is that, is that twenty-ten? Oh, my goodness. I know that's always.
Well, I'll say from staff perspective, it's been a little bit of a while.
Well, upwards of, with that chair. As far as staff, as far as, you know, these directors.
Um, I had a couple of comments if you noticed it.
Okay, let me speak to that.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just think that, uh, based on the agenda tonight, there's no action required of this committee. And I think that's, uh, awful. I think we should sit down with the mayor and our member and decide whether our role is. I mean, if we aren't gonna participate with the mayor and make you make your decisions in transportation, then I don't see your role as. And we cover meetings without any action. And I wonder why the mayor, I mean, we're just gonna be fed full of information and do nothing with it. Uh, I, I just question whether it's my fault.
Yeah, those are fair comments, so. Take it back. Up good, capping staff. So, couple items that may be of interest. Um, Sequoia Station is, um, possibly gonna go under some major redevelopment, but maybe not for a while. Uh, the group that owns Sequoia Station, I think it's Low Enterprises, they had a meeting last week. And, um, they had an open house for a possible redevelopment of it. And I think you guys know Sequoia Station is the Redwood City stop. And the Safeway there and the CBS. And, um, they're imagining as many as twenty-five hundred apartments, that's the max, and tall story buildings, which is allowed in Redwood City's downtown precise plan. Um, I think they're pushing that just to maybe shock people and maybe we'll dial up that. Something like that, something developers do that, you know, say, oh, look, our final plans are not bad, but, um, that's what was discussed at the meeting last week. I, I wasn't there, I just read some articles on it. They haven't made a formal application yet to the Redwood City. Um, but certainly, um, they're seeing that because Redwood City is becoming a major stop. Uh, they can, and also all the development going on, that they turned it into some commercials, retail, apartments, condos, they're taking, you know, take more advantage of that, that property. So that's something that'll be coming down the line, changing, um, changing the Redwood City rail stop. Um, Menlo Park, um, also had a meeting in July, their rail stop committee. Uh, they've, they are ruling out the citywide tunnel option, so, uh, that's one.
They don't have a citywide, but.
Tunnel option. So they, previous council kept a citywide tunnel option as an option. Um, they didn't have anybody could think of any way to pay for it. But the subcommittee has eliminated the tunnel, uh, uh, citywide tunnel option. And, but they are still looking at plans to look at elevated grades. So they might elevate, um, something like three of the rail crossings to get grade separation. Uh, so the three southernmost ones in Menlo Park, what about trench? Uh, that's, no, they basically, well, they've eliminated the tunnel option. I, I presume also they're gonna make a trench option too because the trench is very difficult to do with or impossible to do with two creeks or on each border. Because they'd have to get above the creek or get below the creek by the time they reach the border. So they wouldn't give them much time to get up or down because they're going to be at one percent grade, possibly two percent of Caltrain by then. So it's not, it's not very much elevation they can do. So they're, they're doing this study because they were given some grant by, I think, the team in San Mateo. And they decided on a plan to do grade separation. So they haven't come up with a final recommendation yet, but, uh, they're reexamining what the previous council was favoring. And so they're, uh, looking at possibly doing kind of this fully elevated, uh, uh, train so that they can go and separate three of their, three of their rail crossings.
Well, I would.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, Greg, this is a replay of the meeting that you and I attended in Menlo Park. When they came in having dismissed the tunnel option and looking at just two of the, uh, grade separation problems. And the public that was there made such a fuss about the whole thing. By the end of the meeting, they, they, the subcommittee brought all the alternatives back in again. It sounds like they're going through the same process again.
Well, they've got three new members and that's difficult for them to, uh, deal with these problems.
We're, we're hearing into discussion.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, and my last comment, speaking of not being able to decide, Palo, Palo Alto grade separation. Uh, so, um, the BTA says, uh, told Palo Alto measure B funds, which can be used for grade separation. Will be totaled or not necessarily be totaled equally among the cities that they're requesting. So they're gonna go it up, uh, first come, first served, basically. So if you're shovel ready, you're first in line. And, um, which doesn't necessarily go above Palo Alto because, uh, they are still deciding what they're, they want to do. Um, and the other thing about what BK is doing with the grade separation is that they will not sell bonds. They will wait till the measure B sales tax when it comes in and then go off and run the test again. So it may be a lot before they see any construction and, uh, in San, Santa Clara come back. And that's all.
No public comment? So this is the opportunity to discuss the future agenda.
So I have from you, uh, just action items. I don't know about that.
Role in the committee, yeah.
For the regarding action items. And future one also this quad gates too that you want to discuss.
Right.
And I don't know about this transportation.
Are there any other?
And they committed to quad gates in their option, so they would take care of it eventually. So whether we do something in the interim from a safety standpoint with the other transportation.
Are there any other future agenda items?
Yes, I have one. I think somehow we should recommend that Caltrain be required to, under the Freedom of Information Act, disclose how much their business plan costs. I know they had a full-time consultant, they had a presentation of a hundred and thirty slides. It was, it wasn't cheap. When they started the project, Jack, they said about ten million dollars. Yeah, and they're ending up with just twenty-two million to start and goes to thirty. Yeah, and it, and they're ending up with just twenty-two million to start and goes to thirty million to finish. It looks like a work of fiction. Some fiction gets good, good funding, but I, I think the American experience is a hundred percent in it.
So, I...
Well, I'm gonna have to say, well, I said if it's in the, I mean, what I agree was, uh, over three of the Alex, to see whether it's just information that can't out, or it would be an item for compensation, so...
Or action, I mean, it's, it's... What, well, I, I'm, I'm kind of curious, if there's action that the committee takes toward that, is it? What, what are you asking, are we asking to just look into it and see what it is, or you want us to take some action?
I'm asking the committee, uh, I'm gonna recommend the council of the town to submit a request under the Freedom of Information Act.
Okay.
And if that doesn't work, or individual, the volunteer will.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Okay.
I think we should have a resolution at the next meeting. If, then, all those, very straight, we should have a committee on West, maybe, for jobs.
Good suggestion. Any others? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Just a second. Meeting adjourned.